Okay, we have, I think the opening thing here is bid opening, so we'll go through that and then we'll.
We have the 130 bid opening for 100 by 200 foot scrim reinforced polyethylene geomembrin.
Boarding in progress.
We have the first bid. This is from Cascade Geosynthetics. Total cost is $143,460.3. Next bid. This bid is from Northwest Linings in Geo Textile Products. Total cost of the county is $113,914.42. Next bid. This bid is from Layfield USA. Total cost of the county is $126,772.80. Next bid. This bid is from Erosion Control Applications, Incorporated. Total cost of the county is $158,466. Next bid. This bid is from Technology International, Incorporated. Total cost of the county would be $127,980.16. Next bid. This bid's from Cascade Geosynthetics, Incorporated. Total cost of the county would be $143,460.3. This bid's from ACF West, Incorporated. Total cost of the county is $141,131.93. Last bid. This bid is from James Pipe and Supply, Incorporated. Total cost of the county is $169,935.92. The bids will be submitted to the Public Works Department.
Okay. Move on to Public Works. Welcome to the new year. You got your own day.
So good afternoon, Susan Eugenous County Engineers. What I just handed out to you is the first item on the agenda is the MPDES NOI form that we need to submit to Ecology and all those acronyms meant it's our Notice of Intent to Reapply for our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Summit System Permit, which our current permit expires in July 31st. The new one will go into effect August 1st. We will be reapplying as a Phase Two to the Western Washington Municipal Stormwater Permit. We are required to have this form signed and returned to Ecology by February 1st. Currently, the way our system is set up, Commissioner Mortensen is our designated legal representative. The last time we set it up with Ecology, so I'm here requesting I have filled out the required information online, which included our population and just two other simple items. And this is the form stating that, yes, as the an elected official that's been designated by the board, I am agreeing that we are going to reapply for coverage under this.
Yeah. So you want me to go ahead and sign it? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we have to have it, right?
Yes, unfortunately, we have to have it and we just need to start working through the next phase of the process. And I'll find out when they issue the final permit what that means to additional requirements for us in the municipal area. Because this only applies to the area directly outside of Longview and Kelso. That is our urbanized area. We do not apply it to the rest of the county.
How often do they ask us to redo this?
The permit is a five-year permit, so we renew every five years.
Take care of us for the next five years?
Yes.
Who's kicking this off?
Oh, I am.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything more on that subject. We're all good. Okay.
You will have to let me know exactly which of the four lines you want signed.
Okay.
The next item we had about once Mike Moss, Public Works Director, Public Services Director. We have Cougars WATVs listed on there just because recently we received emails and so did us, our team, about the speed limit in the Cougar area concerning ATVs and the access to the road. That's a DOT road. That email initially was been going through Patrick Harbison in the office, so invited him here today. See if there's any more questions or have, if he has any more updates. I know the county's chief, Doug Jensen responded, I think, over the weekend also. So I know it's front and center, so I just wanted to make sure it was on everybody's, on our agenda today to discuss if there's any discussion items.
So my, did I, I miss something? Didn't our attorneys say we don't have the power to supersede the state? So it's, we can't do anything?
Correct.
And they're refusing to accept that as a valid answer.
For, yes.
I think it's important to add, we've pressed pretty hard over two years, maybe three or four. Time flies when you're having fun. And we've pushed to the boundaries at which now it's a stone wall. And, and our legal team says you can't do anymore.
Correct. Doug has said that he considers this matter both statutorily and legally closed. He doesn't believe that there's anywhere to go, both statutorily and legally.
Is, is the thirty-five mile push is, was it for the ATVs?
Correct.
Is that why they were pushing for this? You can go on backroads, but you can't go on the highway.
If it was thirty-five miles per hour, they could be allowed to go on the highway. They have a, so they're allowed, we were able to get it inside Cougar, they're allowed to pass. We were allowed to work with Wash Dot to get that passed. There's a hole between Cougar and the National Forest. And they have the WATV routes just inside the National Forest, just past Swift Two. And so they're trying to fill that gap. It's about, what, three mile? It's about a three-mile gap between Cougar.
The last push for the thirty-five.
Correct. And there's no real easy way to do an off-road trail there. There's a creek, there's, you know, critical areas, there's rocks, faces if they tried to do via the BPA lines. You know, there's just no real easy way to go outside of the right-of-way. And we completed a speed study, Wash Dot completed a speed study. We did a separate speed study. They both came up with the same conclusions in that lowering that speed limit would be detrimental to the public safety.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm a recreation guy. I have dual support and, and I get it and I'm usually in favor of this. But you can't, for a select group and then the whole public that wants to travel, that has to, has to amend their behavior to you. I'm not sure that's quite, I don't know, that doesn't feel right.
And so the question comes, would you, would you like me to respond to them or would one of you like to respond to them? How would you like the county to respond to them? Would be the question that I'd like to ask. They don't seem to like my answers.
I'm, I'm not sure. You're, you're thinking you'd send Katz a formal letter again, but you've already communicated everything.
Correct. And then he responded with, he died, don't accept that. Here's, and they sent almost a two-page email of rebuttal against that. And so, uh, do we want to respond to that? Do we just leave it? What, what type of response do we want to leave this in?
I think I go with our civil deputy suggestion and let it drop. As far as we're concerned, we've done what we can now. Doesn't stop them from being able to file some kind of suit against Wash Dot, who's actually the owner of the highway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that sound?
Yeah.
Doesn't sound right.
Thank you.
I might ask you a favor to call that Jeremy Johnson and just explain to him. I don't know whether he's been privy to any of the emails or not that I've seen. I don't think I have his email address.
Send me his contact information. I'll give him a call. I'll look on that email list. There's a good forty people on the list that Mr. Rickard has CC'd. I'll, I'll check. But I'll call him and communicate the same things that we've been communicating, Mr. Rickard.
Just to give you an idea how we've been trying to be helpful, three years ago, maybe it was. I, I went to the, to a meeting in Chehalis in their hearing room there just to support Katz. And I forget the gentleman's name, not Rickert, but.
Mr. Mattson? Mr. Mattson?
No, it wasn't Steve either. Anyhow, it's.
They, they do a lot of good and they offer a lot of opportunity and, and whatnot. And, and we, we did everything that we could. We've worked at this for three years to try to work with Wash Dot to get this. And unfortunately, we run into roadblocks every which way we turn.
Let me press just a little bit. Would, would we have any standing at all to write a letter to Wash Dot saying we understand the rules and we, we comply with them? We still would support and encourage you to speak to, to the problem if you could. In other words, Wash Dot sometimes decides they're going to change this rule to that rule. And they would go around and ask for advice. What advice would we, would we give them here? I see as conflicting because on the one hand, you, you do worry about the majority of the people going through. On the other hand, I think it's actually under three miles, but in any event, it's going to be one of those things, my rights versus your rights. And I think you got to do a multiplier on it and say there are a thousand cars a month that want to do the current speed limit and there are two hundred that want to do the other speed limit. But I, I'm just anticipating that we will be asked again to write something to support. I'm not sure we can do it. I was asking for your opinion.
I, I would say if, if we hadn't conducted our own independent speed study that came up with the same conclusions, that might be a little different, but since we have independent speed study that we're kind of right on there, the same level.
All right. Sounds fair enough.
You know, in this day and age, a lot of these are side-by-sides. When you think of ATVs, you're, there's still them out there where you sit on. But a lot of these are side-by-sides and they can be licensed and they're fully capable of doing, doing the speed limit. So I don't know why they just don't, my brother licensed his rig and can do that. It's not a hard thing to do. It's.
Well, and when we're talking WATVs, we are talking, and, and when WATVs came around, I will admit, I was completely against us passing this ordinance. I felt that it would be dangerous and I felt it, it would have bring destruction. I was completely wrong. We haven't seen what I thought would happen. And so, but we are talking about side-by-sides that have had seat belts installed, blinkers, headlights, all the safety. They are fully licensed. So we are talking about, basically you're in a mini smart car without the, the windows is what you're in.
Fully capable of the speed limit, so I don't know why. I'm curious why they think they need it that, that badly. Technology has changed, but that's. Just to make sure I understand, you're, you're saying it, there's nothing currently that prevents them from driving fifty miles an hour in that stretch? Yeah, these units. Legally speaking. Fully capable of doing that and you're, and my brother licensed his and he can take it around and do that. Sounds logical.
That's the traffic, but we just talk about WATVs. So if the traffic laws are traffic laws, that would be a sheriff and a police.
So let me make sure I understand. When you say traffic laws are traffic laws, you mean if I parked my Subaru sedan next to this fully functional WATV, I'm allowed to drive at fifty, but the WATV is not, even though it can?
I can't answer that. I, I don't know that answer. I, I am just an engineer.
Do you know the answer to that? I, I don't think there's a limit on, once they're, they're licensed. I don't know. I, I have to.
I thought the W, the RCW, excuse me, read that they could only share the road on thirty-five mile and lower is my understanding. But it, I haven't read it for a year when we originally set it out. It, the RCW said only on thirty-five mile an hour and less roads. And so that, unless that's changed, and I haven't heard that it has, that's where we allow WATVs to share the road when it's thirty-five and less, but I don't know the capabilities. I don't.
I think the CRX is the definition of a car. And I think the license plates aren't the same, are they?
No.
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 So that's how you tell. License plate is different. You can't do that here. Does it make sense? Well, they may be better served to work through an RCW update. Yeah, and. These things will all run to your little smart cars that run all over the place. And hence, that was my question. Where would we, where would we stand if we were asked to provide advice in support of a request of the legislature to fix something?
I can't answer that. I'd have to look at it specifically on a, a case-by-case basis of what they'd be asking about.
Okay, so if, if I get contacted, I'll say, right at the moment, the way it stands, we're done. However, if you proceed and there are some avenues you might look into, do keep in touch with us and we'll see if, if we can help. It's probably the best we can do.
Yep.
Okay. All right. The last item we have today is a Cougar rest area that's been talked earlier this year, I believe in October, September, just some discussions about the lease with Pacific Core and the Port of Woodland ending for the rest area by Cougar there. Mainly the restrooms there. There's been discussion just recently about maybe having the county look at and entering a lease with Pacific Core for some of the duties at that location. So we saw the lease, got copies of it, kind of went through it a little bit. I don't know if Doug's had a chance to review it. There's some items in the lease that are, are concerning because they're, it's more than just restroom duties, which we initially thought it might be. And, and the stuff you're liable for at that premises, including the structure, trails, benches, parking lots, stormwater, roofs, plumbing, a lot more and just cleaning bathrooms from our staff. But I think, sure. Savannah's got copies, I think, of where the location is up at Cougar. I haven't been up there for quite a few years, so I can't remember where the trail went out, but it sounds like it's a trail towards the lake with a bench at the end. We'll do it, we'll do what the commissioners want us to do, I think, but we really need to jump through this contract or look at it fairly closely to see, make sure we're all on the same page before we sign up. Initially, it looks like it's like a thirty-three-year contract. My first recommendation would probably be making it more of a, a five-year contract to see how it all goes before we sign to a long-term deal with Pacific Core up there.
I never got a very clear idea why Portal Woodland decided to give it up. But even more importantly, why does Pacific Core need to have a contract? They have a maintenance crew all up along the river and it's kind of an unnecessary expense for us to have to go through. They've got the crew there, so.
That's what we thought too. They have campgrounds on the highway already. Why would not Pacific Core maintain that structure? I know Patrick has some information. I think he's talked a little bit with Jennifer at the Portal Woodland. May have some details exactly why they did reenter it into a new contract.
And just to chime in a little bit, so Patrick might have some more recent information, but about twenty years ago, a local group came together, asked Pacific Core for permission essentially to build a restroom on their land. And they agreed. They entered into this twenty-year lease. And it sounds like because of some of the items that Mike mentioned, there's been some concerns in the lease. The cost of managing the facility is extremely high. Could be some of the factors that, that the port was not getting involved. So it is not a FERC requirement, it's not a federal requirement for Pacific Core to have this. They just essentially granted the use of the land for this facility. So I don't know if Patrick has additional information?
Talking with Director from the Portal Woodland, Jennifer, my understanding is that when the twenty-year lease was up, they, a year ago, they started negotiating with Pacific Power. The same concerns that Mike raised were what start, what brought Port Woodland concerns as well. Fully indemnifying the Pacific Power for the entire parcel, including the portions that the Port of Woodland would not maintain or touch at all. Maintaining areas that they had never maintained before, stuff like that. And then the length of the lease became a concern to them as well. They, the, the cost of maintaining it has just gone up and up and up for them. You can imagine how far out it is for them. They have a staff of five people at the Portal Woodland, one maintenance person. And so that's a minimum two hours out of their day to get up there.
We don't have any parks personnel down there.
No.
Correct.
That's correct.
Uh, but.
Unless, unless facilities and maintenance wants to take it over, but that's still your department.
But she had a list of, what she told me is she had a list of twelve things, nine of them were legal. And the biggest one was the indemnification issue. Yeah, because that brought up a huge, huge concern, liability on the Portal Woodland.
If they offered it to us for sale for a dollar, is this something that would be in the public's best interest?
The Portal Woodland tried to buy it and the Pacific Power would not sell it either.
I mean, I think it's important, important to have on that highway. I don't think it's a lot of the restroom facilities, other than maybe the campgrounds for the tourists going to the backside of Mount St. Helens. Now, looking at the lease, there's a lot of obligations for the county. I just want to, you know, maintain, repair, replace all the structural systems, including the roof, foundation, exterior walls, all plumbing, all electrical, maintain, repair parking lots, repair and replace all drainage systems. There's, there's, the list goes on and on. There's a lot of items, not just initially, like I said, I thought it was us cleaning bathrooms two or three times a week to assist keeping the restrooms open, but it sounds like we're taking over the complete structure of these restrooms. So that's why we, we put on the agenda today to try to get some comments back before we move forward with legal to see what direction we need to go and what the appetite is from the commissioners.
Yeah, the, the way I look at it is I start at the top and say, is this something that gets used and has not caused us any serious problems and it's been operating for twenty years, apparently, no serious problems? And everybody that broaches a topic says it's a good thing. So I, I, I then go down a level and I say, who pays for this? Well, ultimately it's the taxpayer, even if it's Pacific Core that's paying something in there. It comes out of your utility rates somehow. So I don't get too excited about how to figure out how to charge. No offense to any of the, of the finance people. I, I know they have to figure out how to pay for it. And there's some rough edges there. I, I, I fully agree with Mike Moss where he's concerned about. I mean, the contract seemed like, no, we're not trying to lease out the Empire State Building. It should be much simpler than what's there in liability there. Well, one of the reasons I sent it to our, our PAs is because they'll look at it and say, this is ridiculous or not. Or they'll let us know, do you really want to assume that responsibility? I think we want to have the rest area open and supported, but uh it'll take us a while to figure out how to do that, I think.
I agree.
And then the question is, in the interim, can we operate it?
Yeah, I I don't know if we can without a contract in place, but we could try a fast track this. It sounds like according to Patrick, they've been working in the last year with the port between the port and Pacific Core, trying to get this going. So I expect it to be quick, but uh especially if we have some major changes in the contract. If they really want this open, if Pacific Core does, then they'll look uh maybe through a different lens and maybe look at more of the county level, say, we'll assist you, but it's gotta be a with a different contract there. Funding wise, I actually thought this morning, maybe this would be a maybe a tourism dollar. I know Kim, she's not in the room here, but she does have some extra funding. It sounded like when I talked to her and her budgets, that may, now this is really gonna be for you, I believe, for tourism going to Mount St. Helens and maybe if it's gonna impact general fund, which Parks does, maybe there's another revenue stream from the tourism dollar side to assist on on some of this, so um I'll have to visit with Kim.
Does it have a little building she can sell stuff out of?
Good.
So it sounds like we we, you know, if you guys are agreement, we we can go back to legal. I know Doug's got a copy of this uh and start the the negotiation side that gets the contract a little bit more in favor of the county.
Yeah, is there, I'm I'm hoping that there's an interim way, every every day that that title be it becomes a less desirable, if you will, it abandoned buildings get get into trouble.
Correct. And in the meantime, if that's not, and it's not our structure, but we do have crews in that area once in a while, mainly road crew. I don't go to Cougar a lot, but we do have road system out there, of course, uh so on the side roads off the the Wash Dot Road. We'll just make sure they have a chance to swing by. I know the sheriff's office wasn't involved with this. They, I'm sure when they have deputies in the area, they could actually swing by, make sure there's no vandalism or something going on until there's a contract in place.
Yeah, if we could do that, that would be it would be a big help. I um there was something else, um. I don't know, maybe uh maybe our P A can figure out a very simple interim agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm I'm I think the same vein. I'd like to see it open. I don't wanna. I'd like it to be a little more equitable.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay. We'll work towards that.
I wonder if the mobile home park right across the street might subcontract with us.
Yeah, that's we thought the same thing. We thought there's the some camp, couple campgrounds up there privately ran that might want to do that instead of us running our crews up there. It's about an hour fifteen from Riverside where our main headquarters is at for parks to this location one way. So it is, it's a little bit of a jaunt, especially during the winter months when you're gonna have some maybe snow or ice on that road system.
And I've seen these type of entities where it sounds like it has, I don't know what kind of trails they're having. I don't know how the access works here where clubs have taken this on and.
Yeah.
And and maintained them, cleaned them on a weekly or whatever basis and just kind of taken over ownership.
True. Yeah, kinda like our camp host at our campgrounds.
Yeah.
Especially Harry Garker Park.
Yeah, yeah, I've just seen that in different areas.
Oh, I I I did remember what I did want to say, which is uh it's whether Port of Woodland did the right thing at the time to take it on or not, they did take it on. They they apparently have done a good job, and so I would say to them, I thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Maintaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could reach out to our Wash Dot connection too, to see if they're up the highway a lot too. There's they they clean, they they maintain the restrooms on the highway, so maybe it's something they would be interested to on that highway up there.
I I don't want to get too hung up on the on the pay part, the but the liability part always rings a bell with me because every good intention out there will be penalized somehow.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Does that work? I think we got a direction. Okay.
I did actually enjoy the musical chairs. That was fun. We should do that more often.
So that's the all the items we have on the agenda today. We usually have more agenda items, but of course those now get pushed to eight. I Monday at ten A M. Any agenda items we discuss for the month, Tuesday at nine are all clumped on Monday at ten? So we'll be back Monday at ten to discuss.
Yeah.
Discuss more items.
So if if we have the time, I yeah, we we just went through a uh an opening of bids and just for the public again, the bids will go from our clerk to essentially your office. Then what happens?
So uh we take those bids and we do a bid tabulation and rank them from highest to lowest. And we also go through all of the paperwork and documents that they've submitted to make sure they've uh submitted all of the required documents and have all their signatures and their bid bonds. Uh, once we do that analysis, the lowest apparent bidder who has all their paperwork, we will then develop an agenda item and bring it back to a Tuesday morning for Ward in this particular case. If it was a project that excuse me, that had uh Wash Dot federally uh money and also FEMA money, um Wash Dot money, we have to run it through Wash Dot's process and get their approval for their D B E and all of their paperwork. When it's FEMA money, we go through the state um Department of Emergency Management for to obtain their approval. And then we bring it forward to the board that they concur with our with the public works analysis.
And at this point, uh everything is a check the box, so the there is one box that you'll check for the lowest price, but then there are a multitude of other boxes that need to be checked.
Yes.
Okay, and then before a bid is submitted, can I, interested in submitting a bid? How do I hear about it? And can I then come back to you and ask a question? And if you answer me, how do you deal with that?
So uh we advertise our bids in the uh our paper record, which is the Daily News. Um, in addition, depending on the project, we advertise. So for a lot of consultant projects, we also advertise in the Daily Journal of Commerce. And then our construction bids, we put them on the a website called Builder Builders Exchange. And so contractors can access all of the documents on that website. Uh, in respect to questions, uh.
Before you go there, then, if I'm if I'm a contractor, can I put myself on your list saying, please send me particular announcements?
Uh, we do not maintain a list and respond to that. Um, we do have some contractors, uh for example, for overlay uh granite and lakeside in general, we'll call up and say, when do you guys expect to go out to bid? And we generally tell them, and so they will watch in that timeframe. Um, when it goes out, we run three-week advertisements. That's uh our requirement by this date that we advertise construction projects for three weeks.
Okay, and if I'm interested, I I have enough time to check the website one time a week and I'll be I'll be in good in good shape.
Yes.
One time a month?
Uh, one time a month, you might miss something because we do the three weeks advertisement, but uh if you're checking it every week um and you do go on that website and they do show new postings on the top. Um, so if you're on there every week, they'll have like the last week and you can see them by week um or by jurisdiction. So then if you've downloaded the documentation and you have gone through it and you have questions, we do allow contractors to call in or email with questions that we respond to. And generally, the last week, if we have responded to any what we would call substantive questions, uh we will uh issue an addendum um for the contract. And it's usually, we've had these questions, here are clarifications on the questions, so we tell everybody the same information that we've told people over the phone, and that gets posted to the website. And one of the documents it that they sign is they acknowledge that they have seen all addendums, one, two, three. And so it behooves the bidder prior to bidding to check it one last time to make sure that they we haven't posted anything, but we in general will post it a minimum of a week in advance. And if it's anything shorter than that, we extend the bid time.
And if I'm a contractor and I ask you a question, it's basically between you and me, unless it's a question that needs clarification for everybody.
Yes, but the uh there is a phrase clay uh statement in our contracts that say anything that is orally stated during the bid process is not binding unless it is issued in an addendum.
Yeah, I'm mostly concerned about contractor feeling that they're not gonna divulge some kind of secret.
Right, and that's why when people ask us specific questions, we issue those addendums with, we've been asked this question. Here's how we responded.
But it isn't every question you've been asked, the only ones that you feel everybody needs to see.
Right, if somebody calls me up and asks me what the source of my money is, I won't necessarily issue that as an addendum. So um it does have a minor impact, but it's usually in there that this is a Wash Dot money. You have to do these particular paperwork, whereas other projects, you wouldn't have to do some of your D B E goals and interviews and there's a whole laundry list of things.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You saw the Q and A asking where if Dennis could turn his camera on, and I answered that he's trying.
He's trying. He's been having some difficulties.
There, Dennis?
It's not working. There's something wrong with my camera. This is a loner, but it hasn't been set up quite right yet.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
So it's it's your camera? No, I I don't even see you on the list as a.
Uh, well, I.
Uh, it shows it shows him as.
I have.
But he needs to be promoted to panelist.
I have been. And my camera is clicked on. And the dot is on, and nothing comes up. But you can hear me, can't you? I hope.
I got my hearing aid in.
Sean uh sent a notice, says on the county bid website, you can sign up to receive text messages or emails?
So I know we do that with uh the engineering ones. Some of these general bids, he may set them up that way also. Yes, they and if that's through the purchasing website. And all of our constructions get listed on there in addition to going to B X W A. B X W A is for our large public works projects. The smaller like these uh.
I should have asked before, specific to the bid opening, uh is that a total of twenty thousand square feet of material or is that a generic name of a multiple of those hundred by two hundred feet?
So I believe it's a certain number of rolls by the hundred.
Of a hundred by two hundred.
Yes.
And they're used for?
They're used for tarping the landfill um to keep the rain out on areas that have not been permanently closed.
That's not the same material you use for the for the other roads, right?
No, this is a different geotextile than what's used on roads or for a silt fence.
Okay, and when we get it in, where does that get stored?
It's stored up at the landfill.
That's gotta be a pretty big shipment, huh?
Yes.
Way way off the subject, you got any Michigan Wolverine fans over at your place? I'm looking for people to take a dollar off of.
My wife, she was wearing a Wolverine sweatshirt on.
Is she?
Yeah, yeah.
You tell her commissal better a buck.
All right.
She she when she loses, she just has to sign it, because I hang on to them.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll tell her.
I I took one off of Texas Longhorn.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm afraid I was wa- 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 watching the International Checkers Tournament.
Yeah.
There were also a lot of dog agility shows on that day, so if anybody's into dogs, they could have been watching those.
Different type of dogs.
I I was actually undergoing intense cardiotherapy right up until the last minute.
Exactly. Okay.
All right, thank you.
We don't do anything else till two thirty.
That'll give us plenty of time to set up.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
We have time set up. You wanna? You wanna adjourn this thing or? Yeah, so we'll we'll adjourn this meeting and we'll fire back up at two thirty.
Sessions.
Yeah.
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 Okay, and welcome to the Board of Health special meeting today, thank you for coming. We'll go ahead and start this meeting and call it opened at whatever the clock is still wrong. Two thirty. Um. Today, we're gonna do nominations for the Chair of the Board of Health. In accordance with Washington RCW seventy-five point five dot oh four oh, the Board of Health shall hold an annual election. Of one of his members to serve as Chair. Who shall preside over the meetings and be recognized as the head of the Board of Health for ceremonial purposes. The Board of Health shall also elect a Vice Chair. From among our members, in the absence of a Chair, they will have the duties of the Chair. At this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to the Clerk of the Board to serve as Presiding Officer for the election of the Chair. After the election, the meeting will be turned over to the newly elected Chair and the election of Vice Chair shall proceed. So over to Kelly, the Clerk.
Nominations will be made from the floor by the Board members. Board members need to be recognized by the Presiding Officer to make a nomination. No second is required. Once all the nominations are heard, they will be voted on in the order received. The vote will be taken for the Office of Chair first, with the results being announced before we proceed to the Vice Chair election. Are there any questions from any Board member before I call for nominations? Nominations are now in order for the Office of the Chair of the Board of Health, are there any nominations?
I nominate Kelly Lane.
Thank you.
Are there any further nominations for the Chair? Last and final time, are there any further nominations for the Chair? Seeing or hearing none, nominations are now closed. The Board will now vote in order of the nominations received. All those in favor of Board Member Kelly Lane for Chair signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
The vote is four yes and three no. So the ayes have it and Board Member Kelly Lane has elected as Chair, congratulations.
Thank you, I'm honored to serve again and humbled by the nomination. The next order of business is gonna be to nominate and proceed with a Vice Chair. So I will open the nominations up for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Weber.
Commissioner Weber is nominated for Vice Chair. Is there any other nominations for Vice Chair? I'm.
Am I allowed to nominate somebody?
I believe so. I'd. If you're. I did not hear what you just said. I was just saying, am I allowed to nominate somebody? I believe I am for Vice Chair. It's a good question.
Yes, now you.
Well, I was just gonna offer, if you wanted to continue to, to roll as Vice Chair, as you were last year, if you'd like to continue to. I'd nominate you. I'm perfectly happy with the other nomination. Okay. Very good then. So any further nominations for Vice Chair? You okay? We're having, we're having, sorry, bear with us, we're having a few technical difficulties today. Okay, so all in favor of Vice Chair to be Commissioner Weber, say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously, congratulations, Vice Chair, Commissioner Weber.
What, one question, just because we got kinda confused what the terms are, so when's this coming due, when do we need to do this again?
The, the bylaws state that this was supposed to be done at the first regular meeting. We're going a little bit early because this is a special meeting.
So it's every, every year, like.
Every year.
Okay. It's on the same time schedule, that's all I want to know.
Correct. Okay. With that said, and we're, I don't think there's any need for the Clerk, the Clerk will remain the same Clerk. So we have one item of business today to discuss, which is to. Our legal team has drawn up a, an agreement. To contract or to, yes, to use the services of the regional medical officers. By the state in this time where we're without a health officer. So.
I, I would like to make a motion to contract with Dr. Craigor. He submitted an application, the, the motion that was approved at the last meeting unanimously was to appoint or to contract with Craigor or someone else. Craigor's application was regular and it was responsive, he's familiar with the community. And I, it feels like there is a lot of. Issues swirling around, but as far as I can tell, Dr. Craigor has done a good job, but he tends to have a good following within the community.
I, uh, I don't have any issue with Dr. Craigor. I, I don't remember seeing the app, did we see the application? Did I just not, I know he had submitted one, I don't know that I. I mean, I'm.
As far as I know, Dr. Craigor has applied and is over at the HHS Department. If you didn't get it yet, I'm not sure if it hasn't been reviewed. Um, if you didn't get it yet, I'm not sure if it hasn't been reviewed. Um, I, I was also kind of cautioned by the lawyers that we need to keep it to the agenda items. And so the agenda was set up today to, for the appointment of the regional medical officer. And that we could look into a more permanent one later, but at this point, I think we're kinda. Need to, we need to comply and stay with just the, the temporary appointment of a regional medical officer.
Is Mr. Berger, uh, listening?
Yeah, he, he's on. Maybe, maybe David, you wanna chime on, um, just make sure we're headed. Down a.
Maybe he's not.
Clean path.
Hello.
Hi. Happy New Year, David.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Did you hear that? Did you hear what we were discussing?
Yeah, and then I heard you say, I heard the question, then I heard. You, Commissioner Doll, ask if, if I could chime in, and then when I hit accept on the panel thing, it. Cuts out the audio for a brief ten seconds of something was said between when you asked for me to chime in. I didn't hear anything else.
The, you know what's before us is, uh, to. Have the regional health officer sign that agreement with them, and then a motion came up to appoint Dr. Craigor. So we don't know, uh, then the question came up, well, are we here for this one item? Can we, can we go down that path and also look at Dr. Craigor? Are we pretty limited to what, since the meeting was called for this specific item, where are we at?
I think, uh, so was the Craigor application in response to the RFQ that was just submitted?
Yes.
Permanent position?
Correct.
Yeah, I think for the permanent position, uh, you would need to wait for the period to run its course. So if it's the end of, if the RFQ material goes through February thirteenth or whatever the cutoff date is. I think that's what you would need to do for waiting, uh, to appoint the permanent health officer. And today you can cover the, sort of the stopgap measure. The purpose of the meeting was to. The contract with the regional medical officer to serve as the stopgap. And I suppose what you could do, if there's interest in. So my understanding was the state is gonna be a two-week period. I'm not sure if they have any flexibility on being more than two weeks, but your next regular meeting is January thirtieth, is that right?
Correct.
So perhaps one option could be that. If, uh. If the state isn't willing to go. Between today and February thirteenth. You could explore at your next meeting if you wanna appoint Dr. Craigor between the time of January thirtieth to February thirteenth. When the RFQ closes or, or other options.
But I think.
So David, did, have you seen a copy of the agenda?
No.
So, uh, and, and here's a, here's a question that I'm, I'm a little bit confused of. The agenda states.
That the second item for our consideration is the appointment of temporary regional medical officer. Now, to me, that's confusing. We don't appoint regional medical officers. We appoint a medical officer. Um, since the agenda is misworded. The intent is to get us a medical officer, so.
The, the state told us that, that we had to appoint him. I think that came from the state.
To, to get them in the interim. We have to point them.
Yeah.
And that's what David wrote up the resolution today.
Yeah.
Oh, so it should have been, it should have been written, the appointment of the regional medical officer as a temporary Callis County Medical Officer.
Yes.
That's why I was wondering if that.
I got you.
Yep, and that was kinda done so quickly last night.
Yeah, so then that brings the question to my mind, David, if we're appointing a temporary. Can Dr. Craigor be pointed as the temporary and then, then when the formal process is gone, we can, we can relook at it then? Or are we just really bound to looking at the state?
So the agenda said appointment of the regional, regional medical officer as.
Tempor- temporary regional, um, medical officer. That was the phrase.
Yeah, I don't know. It seems kinda like a gray area. It seems like the specific item for today was appointment of the regional medical officer as the temporary. Medical officer, so it's, seems to me that the specific agenda item for today would be considering whether you wanna appoint the state. As the temporary.
So, so, excuse me, if we, if we, the board chooses to, uh, address that agenda item by choosing to not appoint a temporary. Regional medical officer, can then there be a, uh, the motion circle back around and we can appoint Dr. Craigor? Cuz if that second bullet, the second agenda item fails.
I, I would say we can look into it if it, if that motion fails.
This is for the attorney.
Yes, uh, and I'm gonna say that if, if that motion fails, we can move into another one.
Looks like Doug has his hand up. I'd like him to weigh in if.
Okay, Doug.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so where you at now is, is this a discussion, I, I also brought the Chair. Uh, in on the discussion, um, from an earlier email, you're pretty much bound by the four corners of your. Announcement for the special meeting, which is the appointment of a temporary regional officer. You're also handicapped by the fact that you don't have a negotiated agreement with Dr. Craigor, so you can't sort of arbitrarily appoint him in a vacuum without. Uh, understanding what terms and conditions he would be appointed under. So at this juncture, you're really looking at. Covering the needs of your Department of Health. For having a. Pointed health officer. Um, and we're gonna follow whatever pathway the state is comfortable with, with that process. To serve on an interim basis, well, the Board of Health weighs its options on future. Appointment of a health officer or temporary, uh, extension if the state is amenable, uh, with the regional officer. So I would move forward on your decision on whether or not to take any action on the, having a health officer appointed. To address the business of the county's health department.
Thank you for that. So then, therefore, um, apologize, Mary Jane, but we'll have to rule that one out of order, your motion.
So can I have a couple of questions?
Sure.
And, and so I read all, we've been bombarded with emails the last couple of days. So I, my understanding from some of the material that I read is that the, uh, temporary regional medical officer is unable to sign birth certificates. And, and death certificates, but then the contract suggests that they can do everything that a regular health officer can do. The other issue is, is, um, the, the agreement suggests a year that, that there's, is a term of a year. Um, but the other literature suggests, uh, two weeks. So are we back here every two weeks to reappoint? And, and, and if you could, somebody could address the issue of, uh, death certificates and birth certificates, I, I guess, uh, food handlers cards as well.
From my understanding, Gina, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the medical, once appointed with this resolution that David drew up. The medical, regional medical officer can sign the certificate. Is that correct, Gina?
That's my understanding, and I believe there was some language, um. About if the state appointed a health officer for an emergent situation, if the appointment were coming from the state. Then that appointment would only serve to fulfill the emergency that was at hand. They wouldn't fulfill the day-to-day things like the birth and death certificates, but the whatever emergency had come up. Um, but my understanding is that was connected to if the state were appointing a health officer for us. Um, but in this case, if we're looking at the, our local Board of Health appointing, um, that that person, the health officer, they would be able to. Do those day-to-day functions for us. The same, they would be able to perform the same functions as our health officer, our local health officer.
And, and do we have to revisit each other every two weeks?
Um, might be a conversation between legal and the state. I think they have, the state has sort of said initially that they would only do a two-week period. Um, I'm not sure if we would be able to, um, request longer. Or if this body would have to get back together and make that request again. I think it still is sort of up to the state. I'm not sure if David or Doug have a different opinion on that.
I know there was some, uh, email discussion about whether we needed a second name. Um, uh, one, one suggested was, uh, Stephen Lund, Lundquist.
Scott Lundquist.
I'm wondering if we can add to our resolution, our support for Steve becoming. Uh, a, a, an assistant or a deputy, uh, health officer for us. I'm assuming. I miss, uh, Dr. Miller can appoint an assistant like they all do. Can we, uh? So anyway, just sending him a signal that we're, you know, we're okay with Steve if, if, if the motion to do that passes. Or does that agreement not say that?
Um, the resolution, I know the state asked for the resolution to include both the regional medical officer, who's Jay Miller. Um, and his boss, who's Scott Lundquist. Uh, I'm not sure if we could include another name in there, um, or not.
I'm not sure. That's not covered by the contract with the state. My, my understanding of when, uh. Mary Jane Malink was talking about the year-long versus two weeks. I believe the contract, like the term of the contract itself is one year. But the appointment term that the state is willing to serve is two-week periods. So over the course of a year, we could put in a request to have. Coverage for two weeks at a time. That's my understanding of how it works, so if we knew that in the first two weeks of July twenty twenty, say you decided you wanted to. Hire, uh, you could get RFQ ends in, in February and you wanna hire John Doe. Whoever as health officer, you still have the state agreement in effect. So if the health officer goes on a two-week vacation, state. Is willing to step in for two weeks. I think my, that's my understanding of it.
Thank you, and I think Doug is, has his hand up. Doug? Can you hear us, Doug?
Yeah.
I just, I just didn't put my hand down. I apologize. My bad.
You know, I, 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 we're having some conversation on Dr. Craigor, and I really don't have any issue with Dr. Craigor. It sounds like we need to take care of this and, and I think even if we do, uh. When we do appoint, uh, a health officer, whether it be Dr. Craigor, whoever we appoint. I think this backup is, is a good thing no matter what.
Agreed.
I, so we don't. Get our county in a situation, now that we know how, how, what the RCW is, that you have this person that can do this. I think it's imperative on us to have a backup, uh, for no matter what. So I would be in favor of this contract, even if we had a, a, a full-time. Health officer in our, in our county.
Yeah, the, the new revised one that Gina and the lawyers came up with, or the, at least the idea, I don't know if it's been official. To have it as a year-long thing instead of having to do it every two weeks. And then it is supposed to fill in for when the health officer takes a vacation. We notify them and I don't, and with that agreement in place, I don't believe we have to reappoint him.
Yeah, and I don't know if counties, if, when we do appoint a, a health officer, if, if they. Can do an agreement with another county, like we do interlocals with cities and stuff, like when I'm gone, you can fill in, when you're gone, we'll fill in. I, I think that'd be something for the new health officer to explore. I, I, I would really not like to not see our county get in a position where you're, you're kinda stuck with this again.
I think that has happened in the past where health officers will cover, offer to cover for each other in those same type of scenarios and.
So, so whether we do it with the state or we do it with a sister county or whatever, I think that's an, an important step above and beyond when we appoint a health officer.
I, I think the only point to make, uh, about that is, uh, we've learned now it's almost automatic. Here we are today with approval, we're gonna have, have the, have the coverage instantly through the, through the state, uh, through the. Regional health officer. If we involve anybody who's not an employee of the state, we, we do have to go through contractual issues. And, uh, those are things we could arrange ahead of time, but for the purpose of this meeting, right now, it's just to. Get us to the point where we have a contract for a long term.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I agree. We need a stopgap, and it seems like the easiest way to manage right now.
So you're gonna make a motion, Lyndy?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna offer to somebody to make a motion to, or entertain a motion to pass this resolution. That, uh, David Berger has prepared for us. We all should have a copy of. Just took yours, sorry.
So I have one more question, and, and maybe I didn't catch everything, um, so, so this is for a year and we can, but we do it in two-week increments. So come, if we're signing, I think it says effective the first or the third, so in two weeks. We just ask them if they're willing to chime back to serve us for two more weeks and then another two more weeks?
Yeah, the, there's a separate document that the Department of Health sent about the protocol that the county has to follow. So it looks like you have to submit a written, can be an email request to the regional medical officer. That includes the reason and the dates for which coverage is requested. For planned abstances, please submit the request at least four weeks in advance. And then you schedule a follow-up discussion with the regional medic, medical officer or Department of Health leadership to discuss specifics of the coverage needs. As well as any outstanding health or policy issues that should be taken into consideration. A preliminary approval or denial of the request will come afterwards as a result of this meeting. Ensure the local Board of Health or other applicable authority appoints the regional medical officer as acting local health officer, which you would be doing today. And ensure the local Board of Health or other applicable authority provides written assurance of liability coverage for the recovering regional medical officer. And I believe that should be covered by the contract that the state gave you. So it sounds to me from the materials submitted to the state that. You sign a contract which lasts for a year, you appoint them, which gives them their ticket to serve, and then you. Coordinate with the state as needed for what their coverage is. So after two weeks, you, before the two-week period is up, you're gonna need to ma- make sure that you tell them, hey, we've got this RFQ, this is what we're doing, what your plans are.
We could, I, I would offer that maybe the first time we give them the date and we know when the RFQ is, is due. And they may, they may agree to it. If they, if they don't, they don't, but they may, may agree to that.
That's a good idea.
Good idea.
So. I'd entertain a motion to pass this resolution to get us a. Regional medical health officer and start signing certificates. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd still move that, Kelly.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Doll, make some motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering what we do for the phrase, uh, insert name. Are you doing both names or just Jay Miller?
Uh, David left it blank on purpose. He said the reason, David, you wanna say why? I read your answer, but I don't wanna.
I'm not sure who the state was gonna want to serve, but if they want two people for flexibility purposes, I think you can write both of them, both of the names in there. I think Carol has a updated version. She's walking up.
She, she just did, yeah. You, you wanna say who the name is?
What names do they have there?
James Miller. And Scott Lundquist.
Okay, okay. No surprises there.
So the motion, uh, that I made would be this with, with those.
Those two names, Scott Lundquist and James. Miller.
Lundquist.
Yeah, Jay Miller.
Jay Miller.
Jay Miller. James Miller goes by Jay.
James.
And Scott Lundquist.
And they're both MDs, right? I'm not hearing.
That is correct. MD, MPH.
Okay, so motion on the floor to, um. Proceed with this resolution. Would open it up for a discussion, any further discussion? Um, let, take a vote. Uh, all in favor of passing this resolution to appoint these two gentlemen to help us out in the next, uh, the time, right now, with this resolution? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And the opposed? Any abstentions? So that was unanimous. I didn't hear everybody. Did you get that clerk? Was it unanimous? Yes. Okay, it passes then, so. The Board of Health passes this resolution, uh, we should be able to start signing certificates pretty quickly, and I think, uh.
Just, just as a point of clarification, the, the BOCC will, has an emergency meeting at three-thirty and we will approve this.
To approve.
Resolution and then it'll go on from there.
So it's passed over to the BOCC, yes. Okay. Okay, um, at this point, I'd open it for any public comments, if anybody has any. No, I don't see any, is there any hands, Kelly? No hands, nobody approaching? All right, with that, I'd, uh. Adjourn this meeting then, quick meeting at, uh, two fifty-nine. Thank you.
I think it's only fair that staff comes to the staff table. The people, the people have a right to know your beauti- your faces.
That's standing back on as well.
A previous meeting at two thirty, Board of Health meeting at two thirty, they approved a resolution to have us adopt an interlocal agreement for acting health officer coverage between Washington State Department of Health and Callis County, and that's what we're here to look over and approve today, and I think we all have a copy of that in front of us. I think it's been reviewed by attorneys, and I think everything's in order.
Is the Mortensen clause in here?
The what?
Termination. No, he always asks about how, you know, how we get out of it. I'm not being facetious, and it is clause number four. At our sole discretion. All we have to do is provide written notice.
Yeah. Any questions, concerns on it?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Entertaining motion to approve it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we follow the recommendation of the Board of Health and approve the resolution which gives us a temporary health officer supported by the state.
Perfect.
And approve the interlocal agreement with them.
To be a part?
And approve the local agreement with them. The, 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 the resolution was for the board, but for us, so we have to sign the agreement, right? Is that how it goes? So, yep.
Okay, motion on the floor. Looking for any questions, discussions? Talking with our Human Health Services, it sounds like the, the timeline for this would, would be, that'll be sent up to this, and we're estimating Monday, we'll be back in full, full service. We just got to get the digital signatures in place so we can attach them and do those things. Okay. I'm getting head nods, so it looks like that's it. Okay, with that, I call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. I think that concludes. The only thing I would add, I think I maybe, I went to, probably already heard, but went to council council meeting last night. They elected a new mayor, Beryl Anderson, and went to Woodland Council last night, which was quite interesting. It was standing room only.
That the swearing in for Todd?
Well, the swearing in was that, but the, the standing room only was because in, in previous months, I'm, I want to say November, don't quote me on that, contracts were changed for the city manager, the Public Works Director, and I think Mr. Goddard, I, I forget, Development, yeah, and from severance if they were terminated from three months to six months. At the end of December, the current mayor, mayor terminated the city manager and the Public Works Director, and also changed a couple of months ago was the lieutenant for the police. The, the dog that they had commitment was reduced to one year and severance of three months was approved. So those three were terminated at the end of, of December, and the figure I heard last night was it cost the city a little over two, two hundred and some odd thousand in benefits. So the public obviously wanted to have their say on that.
There was, there was no, the cau, the termination had no cause.
No cause, yeah, that's correct. It was stated, the lieutenant with the dog has, has another position, so now Woodland initially had a three-year commitment on the dog. It was reduced to once, now the dog's gone, and the lieutenant's gone to another position. I don't know where that is. And for the other two positions, I don't know if they have new jobs or, or what the story is there, but, but the citizens felt they had some real concerns. It was standing room, room only. I'm sure it'll probably show up in the paper at some point in time. Who knows? Yeah.
Maybe in the reflector, but we don't even get that anymore, do we?
Yeah. So. So that was my evening. I got nothing else to do. I had to entertain myself through council meetings.
It does bring up a question indirectly. Your reaction to the newspaper is, is appropriate. It's continuing to decline, is my guess. But we're bound to have to publish announcements in something like the paper. How do we go about?
Largest daily publication.
Yeah, I believe so, but I can find out.
But that's not even a daily publication anymore.
Yeah, they only publish three days a week now.
It's Commissioner Mortensen points out a problem that even municipal research has recognized without a clear answer. So at this juncture, you're in a scenario where you select a official county newspaper in accordance with statute that there may be a list of one, and it may no longer provide the scope of publication. In other words, the number of days that really benefits the county in, in getting its public notices out. But that's the harsh reality of it. It'll take a legislative fix.
In, in your, I, I know this is not a good question to ask, but I, I feel compelled. Do you have any notion of what other counties might do in a situation where there isn't even the Daily News? So how do you fulfill that?
Then there's, is potential that some communities have a weekly, which means that when you're trying to get out advertisements for competitive bids or public notices as to, for instance, treasurer's sales, county staff is the force to front load the matter substantially. And in addition, where the newspaper fails to timely publish, it's not like you have option two to go to as an alternative for timely service. Again, it's, it's a matter, there's been a lot of discussion on it. There's not a fix proposed at this point, but for the time being, we're stuck with the really turn of the century language that you publish via newspaper as the official legal document publishing.
I, I know we don't seem to get too many classified ads for Woodland, because I'm sure they're supporting the reflector, because that's, even though that's a, a weekly or a bi-weekly.
That's correct, Commissioner.
We don't get anything from Waukegan County, because the Eagle is their local paper, but again, it's a weekly or a bi-weekly, so we have a little, we've got two more days to go, I guess.
You know?
Well, I, I think we can expect some change in the law at some point to address the modern age.
Anyway. I have heard, though, that the Daily News did find a buyer for their building, so there will continue to be some moves made. Interesting.
Okay. Nothing else?
So actually, yeah, somewhat related question. We, we occasionally are interviewed by Hope Oregon Public Broadcasting stuff. How does their news make it up here, just electronically as opposed to hard copyright?
Well, it's K O. K O A P is the channel state, Channel Ten, or cable, and that's on Xfinity, so.
Is your mic on?
Yes, I, I know the Portland's Channel Ten is a PBS station, and then they have the radio station as well, so.
But at the moment, that would not qualify.
I don't think so. That has traditionally, that has traditionally been one of the most fiercely fought perks for the press, making sure, because it's, it sustains an awful lot of their expenses.
As I see, we, maybe Kelly can tell us, how much do we spend ballpark-ish every week, every month?
I think each department's responsible for their own publications, so I wouldn't be able to give you the, the full amount.
How much does the B O C C spend?
I want to say it's over a hundred dollars each time.
Over what?
Over a hundred dollars each time, but I, I believe how, it depends on how many words that are in it.
Yeah, I remember seeing something recently around four or five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I believe it depends on how many words you have listed in there, but Bailey has that. She pays, she's the financial person in our.
Yeah. When, when we amend, amend our county code, that, that amendment has to be published, doesn't it?
That what has to be published?
When we change the county code, that change has to be published?
That's with the, there's a, that's on a different, it's not in the Daily News.
Oh.
Yeah, that's in a different part. Yeah, and we do pay for that each time.
All right.
Did you put your hand up again?
Not index here.
Yeah, the, for ordinance changes. And some public hearings, you're using the official newspaper of the county, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, what is correct?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for getting to go this afternoon. We will adjourn.
Right.
Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the B O C C. We really have one item of, of business today. Previous meeting at two thirty, Board of Health meeting at two thirty, they approved a resolution to have us adopt an interlocal agreement for acting health officer coverage between Washington State Department of Health and Callis County, and that's what we're here to look over and approve today, and I think we all have a copy of that in front of us. I think it's it's been reviewed by attorneys, and I think everything's in order.
Is the Mortensen clause in here?
The what?
Termination. No, he always asks about how, you know, how we get out of it. I'm not being facetious, and it is clause number four. At our sole discretion. All we have to do is provide written notice.
Yeah. Any questions, concerns on it?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Entertaining motion to approve it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we follow the recommendation of the Board of Health and approve the resolution which gives us a temporary health officer supported by the state.
Perfect.
And approve the interlocal agreement with them.
To be a part?
And approve the local agreement with them. The, 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 the resolution was for the board, but for us, so we have to sign the agreement, right? Is that how it goes? So, yep.
Okay, motion on the floor. Looking for any questions, discussions? Talking with our Human Health Services, it sounds like the, the timeline for this would, would be, that'll be sent up to this, and we're estimating Monday, we'll be back in full, full service. We just got to get the digital signatures in place so we can attach them and do those things. Okay. I'm getting head nods, so it looks like that's it. Okay, with that, I call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. I think that concludes. The only thing I would add, I think I maybe, I went to, probably already heard, but went to council council meeting last night. They elected a new mayor, Beryl Anderson, and went to Woodland Council last night, which was quite interesting, and it was standing room only.
That the swearing in for Todd?
Well, the swearing in was that, but the, the standing room only was because in, in previous months, I'm, I want to say November, don't quote me on that, contracts were changed for the city manager, the Public Works Director, and I think Mr. Goddard, I, I forget, Development, yeah, and from severance if they were terminated from three months to six months. At the end of December, the current mayor, mayor terminated the city manager and the Public Works Director, and also changed a couple of months ago was the lieutenant for the police. The, the dog that they had commitment was reduced to one year, and severance of three months was approved. So those three were terminated at the end of, of December, and the figure I heard last night was it cost the city a little over two, two hundred and some odd thousand in benefits. So the public obviously wanted to have their say on that.
There was, there was no, the cau, the termination had no cause.
No cause, yeah, that's correct. It was stated, the lieutenant with the dog has, has another position, so now Woodland initially had a three-year commitment on the dog. It was reduced to once, now the dog's gone, and the lieutenant's gone to another position. I don't know where that is. And for the other two positions, I don't know if they have new jobs or, or what the story is there, but, but the citizens felt they had some real concerns. It was standing room, room only. I'm sure it'll probably show up in the paper at some point in time. Who knows? Yeah.
Maybe in the reflector, but we don't even get that anymore, do we?
Yeah. So. So that was my evening. I got nothing else to do. I had to entertain myself through council meetings.
It does bring up a question indirectly. Your reaction to the newspaper is, is appropriate. It's continuing to decline, is my guess. But we're bound to have to publish announcements in something like the paper. How do we go about?
Largest daily publication.
Yeah, I believe so, but I can find out.
But that's not even a daily publication anymore.
Yeah, they only publish three days a week now.
It's Commissioner Mortensen points out a problem that even municipal research has recognized without a clear answer. So at this juncture, you're in a scenario where you select a official county newspaper in accordance with statute that there may be a list of one, and it may no longer provide the scope of publication. In other words, the number of days that really benefits the county in, in getting its public notices out. But that's the harsh reality of it. It'll take a legislative fix.
In, in your, I, I know this is not a good question to ask, but I, I feel compelled. Do you have any notion of what other counties might do in a situation where there isn't even the Daily News? So how do you fulfill that?
Then there's, is potential that some communities have a weekly, which means that when you're trying to get out advertisements for competitive bids or public notices as to, for instance, treasurer's sales, county staff is the force to front load the matter substantially. And in addition, where the newspaper fails to timely publish, it's not like you have option two to go to as an alternative for timely service. Again, it's, it's a matter, there's been a lot of discussion on it. There's not a fix proposed at this point, but for the time being, we're stuck with the really turn of the century language that you publish via newspaper as the official legal document publishing.
I, I know we don't seem to get too many classified ads for Woodland, because I'm sure they're supporting the reflector, because that's, even though that's a, a weekly or a bi-weekly.
That's correct, Commissioner.
We don't get anything from Waukegan County, because the Eagle is their local paper, but again, it's a weekly or a bi-weekly, so we have a little, we've got two more days to go, I guess.
You know?
Well, I, I think we can expect some change in the law at some point to address the modern age. Anyway.
I have heard, though, that the Daily News did find a buyer for their building, so there will continue to be some moves made. Interesting.
Okay. Nothing else?
So actually, yeah, somewhat related question. We, we occasionally are interviewed by Hope Oregon Public Broadcasting stuff. How does their news make it up here, just electronically as opposed to hard copy, right?
Well, it's K O. K O A P is the channel state, Channel Ten, or cable, and that's on Xfinity, so.
Is your mic on?
Yes, I, I know the Portland's Channel Ten is a PBS station, and then they have the radio station as well, so.
But at the moment, that would not qualify.
I don't think so. That has traditionally, that has traditionally been one of the most fiercely fought perks for the press, making sure, because it's, it sustains an awful lot of their expenses.
As I see, we, maybe Kelly can tell us, how much do we spend ballpark-ish every week, every month?
I think each department's responsible for their own publications, so I wouldn't be able to give you the, the full amount.
How much does the B O C C spend?
I want to say it's over a hundred dollars each time.
Over what?
Over a hundred dollars each time, but I, I believe how, it depends on how many words that are in it.
Yeah, I remember seeing something recently around four or five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I believe it depends on how many words you have listed in there, but Bailey has that. She pays, she's the financial person in our.
Yeah. When, when we amend, amend our county code, that, that amendment has to be published, doesn't it?
That what has to be published?
When we change the county code, that change has to be published?
That's with the, there's a, that's on a different, it's not in the Daily News.
Oh.
Yeah, that's in a different part. Yeah, and we do pay for that each time.
All right. Did you put your hand up again?
Not index here.
Yeah, the, for ordinance changes. And some public hearings, you're using the official newspaper of the county, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, what is correct?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for getting to go this afternoon. We will adjourn.
All right.
Thanks for all your help on, I mean, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
I have, have not, but I haven't seen the application. Because in the absence of any revelation. Well, I, I, I definitely like to sit down before, sit down and chat or anything. Yeah. And it can be done.